Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the City Council meeting tonight. The City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff. The meeting of the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to be held Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street, will now come to order. We will have invocation, please drive for invocation by Councilwoman Lisa Arms Parsons, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for the stay, Lord. And we thank you for the many things you've given us in this fine city. Lord, just be with us as we conduct business for the city that is the right thing for the future, and we possess these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me.
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Arms Parsons. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Here.
Councilwoman DeGerris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilwoman Cornman?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing none, we will have citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. I have Mr. Rob Duckett. Please state your name and address.
My name is Robert Duckett. I live at 2317 Pike Street here in Poplar Bluff. Thank you for this time. Mayor, and City Council?
Counselor.
Good evening. I won't waste words tonight, as I'm here to speak on a very urgent matter: crime. Since moving to the south side of town over two years ago, I've noticed an increase in crime in the area. The types of crime vary from petty theft and vandalism to drug trafficking and shootings. Now, most recently, I've noticed an upswing of theft, and for those that have little, it's too much to lose. Now, what disturbs me more is not the climbing rate of crime, but the response by our city's police department. Now, as in most cases, the crimes are discovered after the fact. Occasionally, the perpetrators are caught in photos or videos, sometimes in person. So obviously, they're arrested at that point, right? Sadly, no. Responses are often "no harm, no foul." There may be a citation issued, but rarely ends in the rest of an individual. As crime appears to increase, the public's perception is less effort is being put forth by the police. Now, I understand the police department is struggling with budget issues and manpower. And forgive me if I seem to be painting the police department and our men in blue in a negative picture. I don't envy their job, and what they have to deal with on a daily basis. I commend their efforts, actually, and the efforts that they put forth to, as they've been instrumental in removing major crime elements off our streets. It's the day-to-day crime that affects the citizens of our great city is what concerns me. Citizens have taken to policing their own neighborhoods. They are documenting, taking photos, videos of the crimes in their area. And some have gone to great lengths to provide police enough information that could either lead to an arrest or at least open an investigation. That, too, is often met with little interest. When citizens go to great lengths to help the authorities in crime prevention, they are still left with the feeling of being ignored. They feel left to their own devices and vulnerable to the criminal element at large. I, as a concerned citizen, ask this council, what can we do? Thank you for your time.
Next, I have Mr. Cheshire.
Thank you, council, for the time. My name's Rick Cheshire. I live at 2950 Highway T., Poplar Bluff. I agree with what's already been said to an extent. The problem, I've been on the south end of town most all my life. I've built businesses there, spent a lot of money down there, and I still own property and cleanup. Every time we talk to the city, the first thing that comes up is dollars. We don't have dollars. We don't have dollars. So whether or not we're spending our dollars in the right places is left up to y'all. Some of this stuff, I would say, send out to a public vote. But evidently, the public's not smart enough to know how to spend the money. That's why we elect you. We've got some beautiful sidewalks on Shelby that goes out to our nice park. I understand that was done with grant money. And I could be off-base here, but I think when you get grant money, you've got to match some of that. We've got sidewalks on the south end of town you can't even walk on. On at least 30% of Poplar Bluff, south end of Poplar Bluff, we've got 42 houses that's not livable, that needs to be tore down. That comes to Building Standards Board. I sat on that board for six years. If you need to know any of that history, Ms. Nevada knows it real well. I'm very vocal when it comes to that. I was very active when it comes to that. The problem that we have when that goes to this Building Standards Board is dollars. 90% of what's been said already comes down to dollars. What this council needs to do, if you like what you're doing, you need to get out there to the public somehow to let them know why we're broke and why we can keep spending money building a new Poplar Bluff, which I love, because I shop out there. It's a beautiful place, and I'm glad that we can do that. But when you get to people that's working for an hourly wage, and they can't walk up and down the streets, because they can't afford a car, they have to walk in the streets instead of on their sidewalks. They have to walk past houses that's burned down. They have to walk past houses where people that does dope, makes meth, they're halfway gone, so they just break in, they move in. It's impossible to get a, you call the police department, they move them out. I'm going to give the police department all the praise. They do what they can. They move them out, the next day, they move them back in. You know, somebody else, "Ah, you can go stay there." They'd have moved them out last night, we're all right. The problem is dollars. If you like what you're doing, get this general public out here to understand that we're spending our money trying to help you instead of building a new Poplar Bluff. It's always going to come up, so I might as well say it. Somewhere up and down the road, I've been out of this for a long time, a million dollars for a piece of ground, a half of it's swamp land. General public needs to know where that money's coming from. If one penny of it's coming out of general funds, it's too much. That general funds money needs to be spent in the east side of town, south side of town. You can't build a new town until you take care of the one you have. South end of town's been here for a long time. So I don't know if anybody is understanding any bit of this. It's all pretty self-explanatory to me. Don't know where your money's going, don't know how you spend it, but I do care. So my agenda is going to be, I've got away from this for a long time, for about 15 years now, but my agenda's going to be is start finding out where our money's going, how it's going, and how it's being spent, and why there's some funds that we, used to, all I heard, I sat on this board here for, I know it takes three years, for the Coliseum. Every time we talked about dollars, it was, "We don't have any money. The Coliseum's keeping us broke." No, never was. Coliseum never kept us broke. We had a tax that we passed to pay for this building. Didn't come out of general funds. Did it come out of general funds?
Ms. DeGerris?
No, sir, it did not.
Okay, we'll have about 30 seconds, sir.
Well, I've said enough. I've let you know that I know enough about what's going on, that when I start looking into it, I'm going to want some answers. And I think that our general public deserves some answers. Okay? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. And we do appreciate the comments. That's the only way that we know a lot of these things, by listening to the citizens. And I do appreciate everyone for being here and speaking out there. And next, I have Morgan McIntosh.
Okay, I have some light things for you guys. My name's Morgan McIntosh. I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Poplar Bluff. My address right now is 1536 Haven Hills Road. And I'm here tonight to ask you guys permission to sell alcohol. I'm here on behalf of Lisa and Larry Hafford with Haffey's, and Francisco Escobal with Lost Margaritas and Maya's, to ask permission for those two restaurants to sell alcohol during the festival.
I think this is something that we do every year, anyway, so...
Yes, sir, that is correct. I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion. We go in to approve that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
Can you tell us the date of that?
I was about to take it. I was going to say, I forgot to mention it. It's September 26th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then, the 25th, the night before, we're going to have a cruise-in on the parking lot in front of the Coliseum. There'll be no alcohol there, though. It'll still be fun, though.
Okay.
Guys, have any other questions for me?
Any more questions?
Do you have another event coming up shortly after that?
Yes. So we're having Half-Tober Fest downtown, and it will be October 10th?
Say that again.
October 10th, Half-Tober Fest.
Okay.
Isn't that cute?
Well...
So it'll be the second annual Half-Tober Fest. So we're actually, Lisa and Larry Hafford are actually partnering with the other pubs downtown, and including them in this, so there'll be something for everybody. We also are working on, Haffey's also has a Halloween party, so we're working on working with them and making that a bigger event, and having that all through Vine Street. So I'll probably come back and ask for permission for things for that later.
The Half-Tober Fest is also a fundraiser, is that correct?
Yes. So it's raising money for Boys and Girls Club and for Downtown Poplar Bluff.
Okay, one.
October 10th.
How did you come up with that name?
Lisa and Larry.
Happy.
Yep, they're pretty clever.
Okay. Just a little humor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you for the update. We have Mr. Spencer Jones.
All right, it's great to be back again. I had an opportunity to meet Mr. Winters here, and I was very impressed with him, his spirit and attitude. I was really impressed with that. And Kevin Ellis tells me the same thing. He was really impressed with that. However, I was, I'm standing in for Kevin tonight, because he had to referee a game, and I have John with the NAACP, because we have got to get things done. And I've said this over and over again, we cannot wait forever, Ardon. I was disappointed to hear that we had not even followed the paperwork on the street situation. I just assumed that we had gotten that done, and less than I'm misunderstanding, Kevin told me that, you know, it's in the works, but it had not gone done. I don't know. Can you shed some light on that?
So my understanding, the last time I talked with Mr. Ellis, was that I proposed to him, you know, the Memorial Highway and all that?
Right.
That would be an option, and he and I were supposed to talk about that again.
Okay. Well, I'll get on to him to make sure that you guys, you know, sit down and talk, because, you know, the thing is that we've got to be intentional. You know, I tell people across the board, policemen, ministers, whoever, if you're not intentional, you're not going to get things done. And basically, I try not to be a talker. I try to be more of a doer than a talker. But I know that if we're intentionally, we get things done. So certainly, I appreciate that. So I will, I will talk to Kevin, I talked to him today, I'll talk to him tomorrow, and I'll give him a call tomorrow, and, you know, basically tell him that perhaps you may be waiting on him to let us move ahead with that. He had mentioned that he, some group of ministers, and I'm a minister too, but I understand that a lot of times, guys want to be, get their limelight. I'm not about that. So he might be waiting on them, but I told him that we have to move on, Ardon, stuff like that. So, and then also, we, I don't want to kick this to the side, but the firemen and the policemen, see, let me just say this, I want to be very honest and open and transparent with you. Let's just say, God forbid, that if anything ever go down here in Poplar Bluff, you've been, we've been spared, thank the Lord, from any evil or violence, the first thing the news media are going to do, will pick up on, that you don't have a black policeman, and you don't have a black fireman. You can bet your dollar on that, Ardon. They're going to expose that and get that out. That's embarrassing. I am proud of Poplar Bluff, Ardon. So I just pray that all of us, I'm not, I'm not the type of person that want to drop stuff in your lap, and on the other end, we do nothing. I don't believe in that. I believe in partnership. I believe in working together. And I believe that if we work together, and we partner, and we can get it done. And again, Mr. Winters, I want to commend your spirit and attitude, because you're one of the best, and I'm touched by that. Amen? But again, we have to be intentional. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Mr. Kenny Barker.
Thank you, council, for your time. My name's Kenny Barker. 302 McKinley, 240 McKinley, 1545 Menwood. I own all the properties. Down on South End, it seems like the crime rate down there is really increasing. These guys are, they're guys, they're not kids. They're riding around on bicycles. I don't know how they get all these bicycles in town, where they're coming from, but anyway, they're riding around on bicycles, they got trailers on the back. What do you think they're doing at nighttime? They're stealing. They're stealing from everybody. They're stealing from folks that don't have the money, the poor people, you know, and they don't have the money to get stolen from. Well, and then also, they're living in these old abandoned houses, you know, like Mr. Rob was talking about a while ago, or, Cheshire was talking about a while ago, I'm sorry. But anyway, there is tons of houses that are condemned. They're just moving into them. No electric, no water, they're moving into them. They're stealing electric off the people next door, the water. Well, the police officers, they go there, well, they just unhook the extension cord, and it's all good. You know, there's a house down on Bethel Street down there now, that people are moving in there, and the guy that owns it is in prison in Florida, so they can't get him out. I mean, there's, so there's really no law broken, but there is a law broken. And, you know, also, on another stance, is I own a tree business, KB Trees. I'm city licensed, I'm insured, I've got all this stuff. I pay for this stuff every year. I was forbidden to go over to the city dump and dump all my stuff, and so was Mr. Alan Worley. Well, Mr. Alan Worley and me, we teamed up together. I've got a place that we can dump at. I've had to go through the EPA to get this all taken care of, so we can burn our limbs and stuff. Well, you know, you guys are penalizing me and other people that are licensed in the city, and other people that make money cutting trees, they're dumping over there. Why don't they have to go through the same deal that I have to? I pay. I've got a lot of insurance, you know, and I've got my license, and so does all these other tree trimmers. And we are penalized, because these other people that don't have license and insurance, they're going over there dumping all the time. I was forbidden from Mr. Mark Massingham, whenever he was in here, and I never did go over there and dump again, you know. And, you know, I think it's wrong that I have to go pay another dump site to dump all my stuff, and take care of all that, and have to go through the EPA, get all this, I've had to go through a period of time that, a probation period, they watched me all the time, and, you know, I think that they need to do the same thing. But back again, on the stealing on South End, these guys are riding around on bicycles at nighttime. There's no law against that, but they're just, what do you think they're doing? They don't have jobs. How do you think they're making money? They're stealing from individuals every day, every day. You know, my dad was riding his bicycle the other day, and he got bit by a dog, got attacked, got knocked in the ditch. He's 83 years old, got knocked in the ditch, got bit by a dog. We called the police down there, the police went and do nothing. Well, the dog catcher went and got it today. But, you know, that's some of the problems that need to be addressed. I think there need to be stiffer penalties on the people that are caught. And some of these people, they're living back here on Whiteley Park, back there in the woods. They're living down there off of Wilson Street, back there in the woods. You know, they're, it's not their property. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We are aware that there is a problem, but trying to deal with it's going to be tough. And I'll assure you that we will do our best to deal with it. And thank you for your comments.
Can I, can I say something?
Please.
Okay. I have been in contact in the meeting with the Chief of Police, and I'm, South End is my ward, and we are working, right now, I've talked to several of you all, that we're working on having a meeting to try to get a neighborhood watch set up, working with the code enforcement about those houses. So there is something in the works, it's not something we can get done, you know, snap overnight, but it is being looked into, and we appreciate all the positive remarks. I mean, there's no reason to get on Facebook and dog, if someone did good to dog the police or the fire department or whatever, but we do, are aware, and we are working. So I will be posting, having a meeting over the next week or so. Everybody on the South End, you're the ward one, welcome to come, have their voices heard, and hear what's going on.
I'm sorry, I know my time's up. So we're talking about...
Please come to Mike.
I apologize, and I know my time's been spent, and I'm sorry. We're talking about property that's been sitting four and five years, and now we're going to work on it? I don't believe that. I believe until there's dollars given to our Building Standards Board, where the City of Poplar Bluff can go in and tear these properties down, I'm talking about several properties. We had the same problem back when I sat on Building Standards Board, there's no money, there's no money, there's no money. And it's ridiculous. We've got money somewhere, because we're spending a lot of it. Unless you can tell me that this is all being given to us, because I see a lot of money being spent. Now, I'm going to tell you people something, and I'm serious, this ain't the last time you're going to see me. And I appreciate you speaking up, but I'm going to tell you something. I had a conversation with Mr. Wiley, too, 15 minutes before I walked in this building, and I told him if he wanted to defend his apartment, he needed to be here. And he said, "Rick, I'm sure whatever you're going to do is going to benefit the south end of town, I'm going to leave it like that." But I'm tired of hearing we don't have money, and we keep doing nice, beautiful things every year in this city. So let's get some money together, let's get these things tore down. We're talking about properties, I can show you properties that's been under four and five years, that we boarded up, they tear the boards off of them, and they go back in. It, it, I'm sorry.
Chief Wiley was going to be here, but he had another engagement, so he couldn't come.
Okay, thank you. If there'll be no other comments from the audience, we will move on.
Well, one of the things I'd like to encourage you to do, there's, because I'm working with a problem like that.
I'll give you one minute, sir.
No problem. Is that, that what the group of people that you pulled together to come up with ways to make is a good start, Ardon, to solve the problem. With these general folk well, one of the things they need to do is go back to the community and rally people to come to that meeting. Sometimes people will cower and cry, and not come to a meeting, and as a result of that, I'd say those people are not serious.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
May I approach you?
Yes, ma'am. We don't have you on the list, I'll give you about a minute. Please come on.
Use the word, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Name and address.
My name is Linda Gertrude Parsons, and I live at 2500 Block, Thomas Street. In the last month, we have had gasoline stolen out of our vehicles, my niece has had her transportation door stolen, we've had houses, people just walk into homes.
Thank you, I'm short. People walking into other people's homes, and we try to look out for each other down there. Ever since, we've been flooded out three times down there, and this person has really worked hard to try to get some repairs done down that area, so we don't get flooded out again. Like I said, we stood strong through three floods, but it's getting to the point to where you're afraid to go to work, because you come home, your lawnmower's going to be stolen. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, beg pardon?
I didn't say.
Oh, well, somebody said, "Wow."
That's behind you.
Oh, it's true. My daughter's had people just literally try to walk into her home, and these people are chemically induced. I have contacted the police department, I've contacted the sheriff's department, I have gone up and down my road, talking to my, oh, that must be my time, talking to my neighbors to be more vigilant. If we could please do something to create a more safer environment, not just for the homeowners and business owners, but for the children that live down there. I won't even let my grandson play out in the front yard anymore, a fear of, you know, some idiot's going to throw something at him, or he'll find a needle out in my yard. And I greatly appreciate your time, I just had to say something. I live through this every day down there. Thank you all very much. Ms. Parsons?
Thank you. It may not seem like it, but we are listing, and we are trying to do some things. And it's not just in the south side. I live in the fifth ward, and we have a lot of problems up there, too. And I'm sure there are a few other places in town, so it's not just one area. But we do appreciate everyone's interest and comments, and we will try and take a closer look and do something about it. Thanks again, everyone, for speaking. Item seven, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will review engineering service qualifications for public infrastructure improvements and bridge replacement for the Community Development Block Grant, for the block grant application. Mr. Winters?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. The Missouri Department of Economic Development is currently accepting applications for disaster mitigation projects, using funds left over from the 2017 flooding events that impacted much of Missouri. Any grant requested must be for projects that are related to past or potential future flooding damage. We're working with the Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission to compile and submit two CDBG applications for the city. The first one is for the replacement of the bridge on Roxy Road between Maud and Shelby. The bridge is currently weight limited to nine tons. There's also been a significant increase of traffic since the second phase of Shelby Road opened. So we solicited for qualifications from engineering firms for this project, which is kind of the first step in the application project process. Jerry Lawson, Bill Bach, and I reviewed the submittals that included Smith &amp; Company, Horner Schiffern, and Matheson Associates, and based on the three of our ratings, we are recommending that Smith &amp; Company engineers be the engineering firm selected for this Roxy Road. for this Roxy Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Do we have a motion to move this to tonight's voting session?
Yes, thank you. I, I, I did wanna mention that, that there is a deadline, it's due pretty soon, so we have to workshop and vote tonight, just to make sure we stay within their timeframes.
Okay, we had a motion?
I make a motion, we move it to tonight's voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item B, the city council will review engineering service qualifications for public infrastructure and stormwater improvements for the Community Development Block Grant MIT Grant Application. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is, uh, the second of the two applications we're looking at. This one is for, um, a variety of stormwater improvement projects around the city. Jerry Lawson, the street superintendent, and I, and I have identified a few potential sites that, that need improvement, and we will work with the selected engineer during the application phase to prioritize these locations that need the improvements. And again, Mr. Bach, Mr. Lawson, and I rated the firms' qualifications that were submitted for this project. We had four firms that submitted statements of qualifications, included Horner Schiffern, Smith and Company, Matheson Associates, and Civil Engineering Associates, and based on our ratings, we are recommending that Horner Schiffern be the engineering firm used for this project process.
Motion that's be moved to tonight's voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, the, the city council will consider a resolution temporarily suspending the enforcement of Section 210 of the Poplar Bluff Code of Ordinances relating to the discharge of firearms within the city le- within the city limits of the City of Poplar Bluff for the limited purpose of allowing the removal of destructive animal crop inva- crop invaders in cooperation with the Missouri Department of Conservation. Wow. Uh, Mr. Winters?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I've received a request to suspend the enforcement of, of this section of our city ordinance for 90 days to allow nuisance deer to be removed from farmland that's on the eastern edge of the city limits. Uh, the property owner has met with the Department of Conservation, who would issue a 10-day permit to remove a maximum of six deer from this property, and if the city allows the suspension. Uh, the suspension is only for the specific property mentioned, and the coordination will be made between the property owner, law enforcement, and the Parks Department to ensure that there's no activities in the area. This is a, I'm asking for this to be workshop and voted tonight, as the crops that are planted in this field are being destroyed on a daily basis by a number of deer.
I do have one question here.
Yes, sir.
Now, this, I understand the property, is it just the owner himself, or can a family member, or, or someone that he invites out? That came up the other day with some folks, and I just kinda wanted to clarify it. You know, we don't want 20-
No, no.
-people out there.
Do you have a comment on this, Councilor?
As I understand, as I understand- Ten Missouri Department of Conservation regulations, the owner or some other person named on their 10-day permit would be the only ones to do it. It's not open season.
Okay, okay. That's where I wanted to go. Thank you.
The owner has to designate a limit on their application with the Missouri Department of Conservation who's going to be doing the removal.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Because it is not in season, of course, it is pretty strictly regulated by the Department of Conservation, yeah.
Okay, well, I just want-
Why are we asking for a 90-day removal of the ordinance, and they can only do it for 10 days?
They can ask for an extension if they need to, from the Missouri Department of Conservation.
Okay.
So up to 90 days?
I'm sorry.
Up to 90 days?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the process with Missouri Department of Conservation is that they will issue a 10-day limited permit to remove six doe deer. Uh, and if the destruction continues, then they will issue a second one, or a third one, or possibly a fourth one, but they will be for a 10-day period. And that's why we went with the 90 days, just to make sure we didn't have to come back to you for another extension.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And this property is away from houses? I don't know exactly. Is it down in-
The, the-
Wilson Park area?
Adjacent to the old Riggs-
Yes.
Store down there? Yeah.
Did you say that the, uh, the police department, park department, the Department of Correction, of course, has a community supervision center over there? I guess they are aware of this, or have-
I, I know the parks and the police department are. Uh, I will make sure that the Department of Corrections is coordinated with as well,
Any further discussion?
Make the motion to move this to the voting session tonight.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, the city council will consider reappointment of board members on behalf of the Green Force Community Improvement District. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this is an annual process that we request to appoint and reappoint board members to this Green Force Community Improvement District. The city does not regulate this board, however, we do appoint their board members as required by their bylaws. Um, we do the same with some other boards, such as the Housing Advisory, Housing Authority Advisory Board, and that type of situation, so.
I make a motion to move to tonight's voting session.
It's actually the 21st. Be, be the 21st.
22nd.
Okay.
Should've read a little closer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. That concludes the workshop items. Item eight, action required items. AA, bill number 8258, the city council will take action on an ordinance selecting an engineering service for public infrastructure improvements and bridge replacement for a Community Development Block Grant MIT Grant Application. Counselor? Oh, I'm sorry, do with it.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8258.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
At moment, selecting and appointing S.H. Smith and Company as the engineer firm for Poplar Bluff Public Infrastructure and Bridge Replacement Project located on Roxy Road in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading of bill 8258.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
At moment, selecting and appointing S.H. Smith and Company as the engineering firm for the Poplar Bluff Public Infrastructure and Bridge Replacement Project on Roxy Road in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8258 is adopted. Item BB, bill number 8259, the city council will take action on an ordinance selecting an engineering service for public infrastructure and stormwater improvement for a Community Development Block Grant MIT Grant Application.
Motion for first reading, bill 8259.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
At moment, selecting and appointing Horner and Schiffern Incorporated of Poplar Bluff as the engineering firm for the Poplar Bluff Public Infrastructure and Stormwater Improvement Project in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Release.
Second reading.
Second reading.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
At moment, selecting and appointing Horner and Schiffern Incorporated of Poplar Bluff as the engineering firm for the Poplar Bluff Public Infrastructure and Stormwater Improvement Project in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8259 is adopted. Item CC, bill number 8260, the city council will take action on the deletion of Section 405.05012B of the Code of Ordinances relative to conditional use permit requirements for drive-in establishments, including restaurants and theaters. Oh, I'm sorry.
May I have one moment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I didn't ask, uh, or didn't jump up here quick enough, but Bob Summers, 4061 Highway PP, I just wanted to thank the, uh, the council and Matt for working with us. We're very excited to help you guys out with the stormwater project, and just wanted to say thank you, so.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to jump in.
Okay, thank you.
Motion for first reading, bill number 8260.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
At moment, amending the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 405.05012B relating to conditional use permit requirements for drive-in establishments, including restaurants and theaters in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for second reading of bill 8260.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
At moment, amending the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 405.05012B relating to conditional use permit requirements for drive-in establishments, including restaurants and theaters in Poplar Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? I would like to take a moment, uh, and thank Mr. Winters, too. This is gonna streamline, save a lot of time for some businesses.
Yes, it is. I, I, you know, that, that process added at least eight weeks to, to a business that was gonna have a drive-up window that, uh, I agree, thank you.
So, okay. Okay, uh, roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Passes.
Bill number 82, 8260 is adopted. Item DD, resolution number 1931, the city council will take action on a rep, on a resolution temporarily suspending the enforcement of Section 210 of the Poplar Bluff Code of Ordinances relating to the discharge of a firearm within the city limits of the City of Poplar Bluff for the limited purpose of allowing the removal of destructive animal crop invaders in cooperation with the Missouri Department of Conservation.
Motion for the reading of resolution number 1931.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
A resolution of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, temporarily suspending the enforcement of Section 210 of the City of Poplar Bluff Code of City Ordinances for a specifically designated area within the city limits relating to the discharge of firearms within the city limits for the purpose of protecting cropland within the city limits of Poplar Bluff from wild animal crop invaders.
Motion for adoption, resolution 1931.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. You did say the park department.
Yes.
'Cause I know they have the ball fields over there.
Yes. Yeah, there will be, that will be coordinated, so that there's, yes.
I thought you had said that, but I wanted to clarify that.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Passes.
Resolution number 1931 is adopted. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn following the city manager's report.
I make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Morgan mentioned earlier, downtown director, Iron Horse Festival is coming up September 26th from 10 to 4 downtown. Anybody that hadn't got to attend that should really make an effort. They have a, a nice variety of foods, is my favorite reason to go down there, from different food vendors, lots of different crafts and, and, and things like that. It's really an neat event. And, and then, of course, you mentioned the cruise in the night before, and then Half Toberfest.
Half Toberfest.
October the 10th. Another big, you know, October the 10th is gonna be a big day in Poplar Bluff. Another activity we have planned for October the 10th is our Buff Up the Bluff. As you may remember, this was scheduled earlier in the spring, and had to be canceled due to COVID concerns, and we've rescheduled it for October the 10th. Uh, it's 8, 8 to 3:30 at our belief disposal site, which is on the southeast, um, it's southeast from Twin Towers on County Road 604, which is at, kind of at the end of F Street. Um, it is open to any city residents. There will be a proof of residency required, uh, when you, when you drop stuff off. Um, we will be posting a list of items that aren't, that can't be disposed of, um, on our Facebook page, and working with the, the local media to make sure that that list gets out. We will also be beginning to take phone calls the week leading up to Buff Up the Bluff to do pickups from those residents that are 65 years of age and older, and that, more information about that and the phone number will be put out to the media and everything soon, too, as we get that squared away, so. That is all I have this evening.
If there be no further business or comments, we stand adjourned.